Welcome to the Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, special meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. This meeting is by teleconference only. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Francois.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Waddell. Mayor Pro Tim Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Haskew.
Here.
All council members are in attendance.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on the closed session item? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Waddell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Haskew.
Here.
All council members are in attendance.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an item for council consideration, an update on the COVID-19 situation. At this time, I invite the staff to provide the staff presentation. Does any member of the public wish to provide comment at this time? It needs to be with regard to this report. And so if there is anybody that's interested in asking a question or making a comment, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom. And the other way to get ahold of us is to send an email to, oh, please help me, publiccomment@walnut-creek.com, excuse me, dot org. That's publiccomment@walnut-creek, walnut-creek.org. And if you are on Zoom by telephone, would you please press star nine, which is the equivalent of the raising hand if you're going through a computer or phone or app or something like that? Remember that you only will be able to speak for two minutes.
Mayor, we have five individuals wishing to provide public comment. I will bring them in one at a time. We have Jody Nelson first.
I think, okay, are you hearing me now?
Yes, yes, please talk.
I lost contact, so all of a sudden I lost and now all of a sudden I repopulated. So I'm trying to make sure. I would just like to say that, you know, this has to do with the whole COVID-19 circumstances, that we are doing business as usual when this meeting in and of itself is not business as usual. And I realize that you're using the governor's executive order N to 920 to validate this meeting, but you are not under any obligation to have these meetings, only that you can. And finally, you know, Homeland Security has declared that local government is on the forefront and can take control over determining what to temporarily halt. And a recent video by the mayor has stated that unnecessary services have been eliminated during the COVID crises, but this very meeting should be considered unnecessary. I tried calling all day today to talk to someone about this meeting, and because of your skeleton crew, nobody answered the phone. I didn't get a response until late this afternoon, and it was by the city clerk who said that she had the wrong phone number. So, you know, that is why meetings like this should not be taking place. There are so many unknowns, there are so many things that can go wrong, and you're denying, you are denying the robust public comment that these meetings are supposed to provide. If this thing, if this meeting had anything to do, everything to do with only COVID-19, which a lot of it has, then power to you, you're right on, I agree with it. But otherwise, we need to put these meetings.
I'm going to interrupt you right now. It sounds like you're talking about something outside of what your limitation is in regard to this topic. There will be chances for you to talk again later on. So please defer your time to when it's appropriate. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Okay, we have Paul G. Paul, if you could please state your first and last name and city of residence.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect, okay. What I want everybody to do is pay very, very careful attention to the COVID-19 statistics, because they are juicing both the numerator and the denominator. And they are doing that for very specific compliance reasons. You have to be very, very careful about making conclusions about the numerator of people dying and the denominator of what's at the bottom. The bottom should be projected cases. It should not be confirmed cases. That way over-represents the death percentage. The problem here is there's too much fear that is actually being induced upon the public to do things like shut down the economy and try to take away some of our rights. Our rights are very important to us. We want none of them taken away, including within the context of this meeting. When you actually limit somebody to two minutes by Zoom, you're not talking to the people who don't have this technology. You're actually filtering out very important members of your community. There should be no decisions made beyond COVID-19 in any of these meetings. They should all wait for future meetings.
Excuse me, excuse me. If the rest of these conversations that are happening with regard to this time and this comment period are going to...
This is it, I'm like making a comment for that period.
You're not talking about COVID-19. You're talking, and what the city is doing to help with the crisis. You are talking about something else.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about preserving our rights. That's the important...
That's different. So please, please defer your time for people who have comments on the topic right now. Thank you very much. Next call, please.
We're bringing in Jamie Tucker. Jamie, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I think what happens is when you let the person talk, it disconnects them for a minute for some reason. Anyway, I do appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I'm sure times are really tough and you're having to respond quickly and make decisions quickly. I think my biggest concern is that you are using the COVID-19 event in a way that it actually affects other people being able to attend meetings like that, having this meeting.
I am interrupting you because I have asked you and all your cohort to wait for your appropriate amount of time. Would you please defer your comments to a later moment and let people who have questions about the services and what the city is doing to relate to them talk now? Thank you very much.
Well, that was nice.
Right, then we will go back to item D, which is the... Councilmember Silva, would you like to take a helm here?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have some questions for, maybe for the city attorney, actually, because it's about some of the legal issues involved here, if the attorney is available. Thank you, thank you very much, Steve. As most of my colleagues know, I have been in and out of Washington DC in the last couple of years. I've been at numerous conferences where the FCC ruling from 2018 has been discussed, the Ninth Circuit court decisions. And I've also been on the council long enough to know somewhat what our authority is around these cellular licenses and the placement of cellular facilities in our community. Can you help me or clarify? What is our authority related to cellular facilities, not just 5G or 4G, but, you know, even the ones that are 3G that are out there now?
So the city is constrained both by federal law and by state law. And so at an initial level, the city cannot regulate in a way that effectively preempts particularly small cell facilities and other facilities to be placed within the public right-of-way in the city. The city does have some regulatory authority that relates to aesthetic issues. And so the city has some ability to regulate in those areas. The city does not have the ability to regulate in terms of radio emissions that are associated with it, as long as the projects are consistent with FCC regulations. So that's the extent of the city's review of it. With regards to the particular licenses that are on the master license agreements that are on the agenda this evening, the FCC has issued rulings that provide limited authority for cities to be able to collect some funds for the use of the public right-of-way. There is a dispute between local governments and the federal government as to how much cities should be able to collect. But those disputes are working themselves out, both in the courts and potentially through legislation. The council should also be aware that there is legislation at the federal level that has been introduced that would put the FCC's order regarding compensation issues and certain regulatory issues into law. And the National League of Cities has advised that in the initial, not the initial, but the most recent stimulus bill that was approved, that there was a desire or thought that that might be amended into that legislation. And the council is also aware that there is talk of yet another stimulus bill coming out of the federal government. And so there is that possibility that it could be inserted into that legislation as well, too.
So in reading through the governor's recent orders on essential services, his order referred to the national essential services list of about 16 categories, and telecoms was a part of that. So are these facilities considered essential services under federal and state law?
Yes, they are.
So the lawsuits that have now been consolidated and heard in front of the Ninth Circuit, actually, I think it was the Seattle Court in the Ninth Circuit back in February, really the arguments are not about whether we have a right to say no, because we haven't had a right to say no for a very long time. It appears that the argument is about what price we can charge or what value is allowing people into our right-of-way and on our poles, and the other is about how fast we have to approve these. Is that correct?
That is generally correct, yes. That is the challenge, one of the challenges in Court Ninth Circuit is to the relatively recent 2018 FCC rule that was adopted.
And so if the, to put it mildly, if the Ninth Circuit rules in the favor of the cities that have, and the municipalities and the counties that have sued the FCC on this, if the Ninth Circuit weighs in our favor, the amount we can charge will be higher, presumably. And if they rule against us, they're going to lock in, the courts will lock in the FCC's regulation from 2018.
Effectively, if they hold it as long as the composition of the FCC stays the same and there isn't a, you know, a change in administration, yeah, or federal legislation, yes, it would go into, it would remain in effect, as it is in effect right now, absent the challenge.
So we are allowed to do these master licenses, and three of these entities have negotiated with us for quite a bit of time. And these master licenses give us the ability to set into agreement how we will structure these poll licenses as they come forward with those.
That is correct. And there's also a provision in the master licenses that say that if the FCC order is overturned, that the actual license fee that is payable to the city would be in excess of the $270 that is allowed under the FCC order.
So these master license agreements don't actually approve any specific location or conditions. They just set the framework for that.
That is correct as well, too. The carriers would need to come back in and seek a separate license, a poll agreements for each poll that is going to be utilized, each streetlight, if you want.
And that license approval process includes design materials, installation information, and actually an RF and an EMF study for each of those specific polls, not just about the sources, the RF and EMF sources based on the facilities, but also on the cumulative surrounding area for that poll.
That is correct, that's my understanding as well, too. Well, they absolutely have to submit studies that show compliance with federal law.
So what is the advantage of us doing it now versus waiting and seeing what happens in the stimulus package and the federal, what Congress might do, or what happens at the Ninth Circuit?
So from staff's perspective, we think that putting this MLA into place now, approving the MLA now, will, you know, aside from facilitating a structured way where these facilities could be in the right-of-way and the carriers wouldn't build their own facilities in the right-of-way, you also have the situation where if the FCC order is overturned, either through legislation or a court order, or a change in the FCC and a repeal of that rule, that the license agreements would allow for the city to recover a greater amount of money per poll, license fee on an annualized basis.
So what's the risk if we do nothing now, tonight? Or in two weeks from now?
The risk is that, you know, that there has been a desire to include this in the federal legislation, so there is some risk that it would be included. And the carriers, if it were to become part of federal law, they would have really no incentive to agree to a provision that might provide for a higher compensation. I think it's also that, you know, we have, at the staff level, we have identified and negotiated for terms that we think are protective of the city's interests in terms of where facilities may go by making some public facilities available. It reduces, in all likelihood, the necessity for the carriers to, at least in the corridors where the public licensed light poles are, as opposed to PG&E light poles, it does minimize the necessity of the carriers to put in more of their own individual facilities, which they have the right to do.
So let's actually talk about that for a second. So the carriers have the right to come down Ignacio Valley Road, for example. And if we said, no, you can't have the pole at Ignacio and Homestead, then they could say, well, we're building our own pole? And we couldn't, could we say no?
I'm sorry, just could you repeat that question?
All right, so if we say no to a carrier that they can't have the pole at, that is our pole at Ignacio and Homestead, could they come back and say, well, then we're putting in our own pole? And are we allowed to say no?
No, they have the right, they would have the right to install poles within the public right-of-way. The city would have a bit of control over that, but you couldn't absolutely prohibit it, prohibit it, no. Because you can't prevent the implementation of the technology. Cities are prohibited from doing that.
Okay. And are we allowed, under federal law, to have a moratorium on this until this COVID crisis is over?
We are not.
And why would you make that, why would you make that interpretation?
Because the federal law doesn't allow you to impose restrictions that prevent the deployment of the technology. I will say, you know, some cities have attempted to and have considered or adopted a limitation on the time period for processing applications under their existing regulatory structure. But it's not ultimately a denial of the right to impose it. We believe that the MLAs actually provide a structure to the processing that would be beneficial to the city.
And I have one last question, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for the city engineer, but roughly, how many polls are in the city? And how many are we talking about that are the city's polls versus those owned by the PG&E or someone else?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Waymire.
Sure. There's about 1,300 city-owned poles and about 3,200 PG&E poles. So most of the city-owned poles follow the major right-of-ways from major streets like Ignacio Valley Road, Treet in the downtown. And then the PG&E poles are mostly in the residential neighborhoods.
So what we're talking about are primarily the large light poles that are on Ignacio Valley Road or Treet or Bancroft or California Boulevard?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor, thank you for letting me do that. And I have other questions that'll come at the end that are technical in nature on some of the nuances of which in the license agreements.
Okay. Does any other council member wish to make a comment? Please raise your hand on the little hand indicator, because not all of your pictures are available to me. I see none. Therefore, I am going to open this to public comments. There are people who, oh, Matt, did you want to talk? No, okay. If there is anybody who wishes to make a comment on this in the public comment, I'm thinking maybe the people already have experience and they don't need to hear the lecture about how to do it again. So would the city council, city clerk acknowledge the people waiting?
Sure, we'll start to bring them in.
Thank you.
We have Dante Williams.
Dante?
Just a moment.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Let me mute my computer. Hello, my name is Dante Williams. I work for Verizon Wireless. We are located in Walnut Creek. We have about 350 employees. And I just wanted to speak about why we believe it's really important for us to move forward with this MLA this evening. First of all, what this will do is allow for us to partner with the city on choosing locations, on working on design, and have a framework for Verizon to be able to continue to bring best-in-class services and also continue along the path that would make for a much better design. Allowing us to attach the steel poles, which we currently don't have the right to do, helps us to steer clear where possible from the brown poles. The design for steel poles allows us a much cleaner, sleeker design that we're sure the city would like to see, especially in their major thoroughfare. It also gives us a framework and some business surety to understand what, you know, what the plans are for Walnut Creek moving forward. Right now, without this framework, we really don't, we really don't have an ability to plan three, four, five years out. And in this time of disconnect and social distancing and isolation, we believe that adding capacity to the network is essential to make sure that every connection, every time goes through. That's the purpose of small cells, is to add capacity to the network and also make sure that we have connectivity. Recently, I was watching a story on the news where, of course, when you contract COVID, you can't visit your relatives. So the only way for people to communicate with some of their relatives who are in hospitals is through FaceTime, through mobile services. So we really believe that this is an important matter. We really want to make sure that Walnut Creek is included in our plans. I'm here for any questions, if you had any questions about the technical aspects of the build.
Thank you. Are there any council questions or staff questions? I see none. Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
You're now bringing in Alice Lee. Alice, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes. If you want to state your name and your city of residence and go ahead with your public comment.
Alice Lee, Alamo, California. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge, and I will speak to some of the points Cindy Silva had brought up. I've seen in local government meetings throughout Ponte Vedra County, telecom tells local government the CPUC code and the Federal Telecom Act of 1996 severely limit their local powers. And the local government says, our hands are tied. Here are a few reasons why this is not true. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 places limitations on local government authority over wireless facilities citing four three reasons: placement, construction, and modification only. Notably, the word "operations" was included in a draft version of the law but was deliberately removed by Congress from the final version because it was considered an excessive limit on local government power. This word matters. You have full authority over how wireless facilities operate, which means you can regulate the amount of power transmitted, you can measure the effective radiative power regularly, you can require that the cost of measuring the power be covered by the telecom company, and you can place limits on the hours of the day the wireless facility is on. Even local government attorneys make mistakes in telecom law. At a county planning commission meeting I attended on December 12th, 2018, the chairman asked if the county ordinance for wireless facilities restricted annual emissions testing. The county council answered, quote, "The county is preempted by federal law from regulating the placement and operation of these facilities based on RF emissions", end quote. The county council misquoted the law by including the word "operation", and that incorrect statement was accepted by county officials without question. But that's a dangerous liability. Telecom relies on Section 709 of the CPUC to assert a right to place wireless facilities in the public right-of-way without regulation from local government based on a narrow interpretation of the word "incommode", because the CPUC code protects their right to use the right-of-way as long as they do not, quote, "incommode the public use of the road", end quote. However, in T-Mobile West LLC versus City and County of San Francisco, the California Supreme Court upheld lower court rulings for a broader interpretation of the word "incommode", stating other uses may be incommoded beyond obstruction of travel, for example, noise, negative health consequences, safety concerns, end quote. The court therefore supported San Francisco's broad interpretation of local...
For two minutes, we're up. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the queue?
We have a few more. We're bringing in Vivian McHenry.
Hi. Hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hey. So hi, this is Vivian with the friends, with both staff, the friends of SPECT, Alexis and Ton Hall. We wanted to say good evening and I...
Vivian, we're not here, we're only at consent calendar, so if you want to wait for the real public comment, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Thank you, you're a love.
Cliff, are you there?
Hi, this is Cliff Fitterer, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm a consultant at AT&amp;T. I've been negotiating these license agreements with multiple municipalities. I'm the 29-year resident of Walnut Creek that spoke up earlier. And we approached Walnut Creek a couple of years ago to talk about this technology. It is critical infrastructure. If you think about the dynamic population density within Walnut Creek and the amount of traffic, as mentioned before, these small cells serve critical capacity. And it's interesting that we're on a video conference call because video is one of the dominant applications on both fixed broadband and wireless broadband networks. And so we really support the council's and the staff's recommendation to approve this this evening. This is only the first step. As was mentioned, there would be strategic locations that AT&amp;T is interested in and would like to start applying for poll licenses and going through the permitting process, which would be the... applying for pole licenses and going through the permitting process, which would be the second step. We didn't mention the community benefits to this. There are substantial community benefits. I think most people have cellular phones that are either listening to this meeting or on the council. I'm sure many people use video. The performance benefits to the network, the quality of the network, and the ongoing performance are critical, and small cell plays a critical role in that. So, we've appreciated the collaboration and partnership with staff on the license agreement and hope that the council this evening will approve the license agreements. And Ken Minz from AT&amp;T is also on the meeting with us tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions you have as you consider the.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I hear none. Thank you very much for your comments. And is there any more in the queue?
We have about four more. We're bringing in Pete Bennett.
Thank you.
Okay, Pete?
I'm having trouble with my 4G phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I live?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Ken Minz is on the line. This is Pete Bennett. I know you know my name. And the other guy that works for AT&amp;T. I have issues with AT&amp;T's methodology and how they treat their subcontractors. I didn't expect this to be on when I signed back in. Mr. Minz, my family was kidnapped from the San Ramon District connected to AT&amp;T. And you, you've dogged me for five years, six years, seven years, 10. And your company owes me a significant amount of money. I'm the vendor that worked on the 5E West for the Ace Automated Construction Group, which is relevant to the people that install your paper, your towers. You defrauded me out of at least $35,000. You dragged me into an international case involving a virus called Nimder during 9/11. Five of my family members are murdered in Utah, and I've been emailing you and everybody else at your blithering company for 10 years, 20. You're killing my friends and my witnesses. You there?
Yep, thank you. Are you done?
I got a shitty, I got a crappy phone from being beaten up all the time, Mr. Minz. Okay? I get arrested and jailed in connection to your virus problem that helped kill 3,000 people. I was set up. You got it? If I'm still on, I can't tell. I'm standing out in the cold. You kidnapped my kids. I know how you did it. Through the district, through the AT&amp;T. And then probably somebody in your blithering place.
I believe his time is up.
We're now bringing in attendee Candor 1789.
Mayor, may I just make a point of clarification?
Oh, yes.
I would like to make sure that all the attendees address their topics or comments to the council and not to anybody else.
Good point. Thank you. All right, would the clerk please repeat the name of the person calling?
We have Cand, attendee Candor 1789.
Hello.
Please state your name and city of residence.
Connie Anderson, Kensington.
Okay, you're going to have to lean closer into your mic. We can't hear you.
Okay. I, I can't be that close if I have electromagnetic sensitivity.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is an official request under the American Disabilities Act that you cancel the appointment of the city manager to any posts related to telecommunications, given the lack of knowledge observable on the city's website of the many problems pertaining to wireless communications and solutions thereto. As a person diagnosed with, by medical doctors with respectively electromagnetic sensitivity and toxic encephalopathy, I need to travel to Walnut Creek for clinical appointments with two doctors there. Both of these medical conditions are officially recognized by the U.S. Access Board. When I am exposed to pulse-modulated microwave radiation such as from wireless transmitters, I experience many painful symptoms that constitute physical assault, and as such requires that I avoid these exposures. Were new wireless transmitters to be placed, constructed, and operated in Walnut Creek, I would be blocked from accessing my doctors or would have to suffer more assault just to visit them. Under the California Constitution, Section 1, it is my right to, quote, "obtain safety," unquote, and not to be assaulted when visiting my doctors. For these reasons, an appointment of the Walnut Creek city manager as a signatory or in another position pertaining to or and/or presumptive of master licensing agreements, where said potential agreements do not consider the ADA and the California constitutional rights of persons with disabilities affected by said potential agreements, would be knowingly to cause, suffer, and allow, and/or permit physical harm to me and others so affected. Such act would constitute a delinquent act under Section 28, 2CE of the California Constitution's Declaration of Rights. A victim is a person who suffers direct or threatened physical, psychological, or financial harm as a result of the commission of a delinquent act. Therefore, I officially request the cancellation of any vote and any appointment this evening pertaining to telecommunications. Thank you for your attention. I look forward to receiving your notice of compliance. And right now, I'm experiencing a number of my symptoms because I've been.
Thank you. I'm sorry you did run over the time. Is there any other person in the queue?
We have, bringing in Jody Nelson.
Hey, Jody.
Oh.
Okay, Jody, you're on.
Remember, you only have two minutes.
I know. Thank you very much. So, this is, I attest and affirm that the following statements are true and accurate and within my personal knowledge. If the city manager is also the signatory to the contract, he would not be able to act in his due police power. Should the companies act illegally, which they do often, as they have done in other locations by transmitting something other than what was proposed in the application, note that the large companies with which the master agreement is planned are not the holders of insurance. They're generally shifted that liability over to the small franchises that lack funds to pay out and, and in the event of a in the event of any kind of disaster. Remember that this electronic equipment is likely eventually to start a fire. The master licensing agreement scenario presents also a fundamental problem with your contracting with large companies while purporting to contract with franchises. The contracts are incoherent thereby, as the parties and the respective liability insurance are unclear. The students, as well. Finally, the city has full jurisdiction over Title I transmissions, which are for all activities, placement, construction, modification on operations, regular, regularable on all bases as listed in the last sentence. Congress ultimately rejected the national approach and substituted a system based on cooperative federalism. I suggest you do as stated in Option 1 of your report. The council could continue the item for additional discussion or direct the staff to make additional changes to the MLA. This would prolong negotiations and could delay the small cell deployment process in Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now bring in Jamie Tucker.
Thank you. I'll get the rhythm right, Suzy.
Takes a little second to bring him in.
Okay.
Let's try the next one. We're having some difficulties bringing her in, so we're going to skip to Matt Lewis for now. Matt Lewis, you're on.
Thank you for having me on. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true and accurate and within my personal knowledge. Federal and state laws, even those in preemption, do not prohibit the city from making reasonable decisions on the placement, construction, and modification of wireless telecommunications facilities, WTFs. More importantly, these laws not only do not prohibit the city from making decisions on the oper, doesn't, do not prohibit the city from making decisions on the operations of the tower and equipment. They effectively require the city to regulate WTF operations. This policy is governed by cooperative federalism as stated by the conference report in the 1996 Telecommunication Act. This means the city has the authority to put restrictions requirements on how WTFs are operated and operations are regulable on any basis, including the health effects of microwave radiation, even protection of bees and wildlife. However, WTF operations are not mentioned in the city's information on its site regarding the potential, but untimely, master license agreement. Clearly, the city is unaware of the laws governing its actions pertaining to WTFs and has apparently been misled both about these laws and the WTF bill out itself. The city is not in a place to be able to appoint the city manager and to proceed in this matter, at least not without the potential for serious liability problems. In addition, the city have the authority to police noise in the community. Noise isn't, noise is includes vibration in the city ordinance, which is what can be and cannot be heard, including electromagnetic vibration and noise. Effective radiated power is noise, and the city has the authority to put restrictions on how much ERP effective radiative power each WTF can use and transmit. Because of this, I believe the agreement exposes the city to liability issues. I have presented no matter of mere concern or any other non-substantial matter, but solely matters of substance and fact and law. I accept your oath of office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. We're going to try to bring in Jamie Tucker one more time.
Jamie? So, again. Jamie, are you there? Yes. Go ahead.
Hi, I would like to just make a comment regarding the waiting on making this decision until you have the outcome of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which will rule on any related FCC case and will impact any MLA as the attorney stated earlier. But this actually goes beyond just how much you can charge. There are other things that you'll be able to regulate. I wanted to say in the, in terms of emergencies, and we're right in the middle of one, the most reliable, the safest thing that you can have for connectivity and communication is actually fiber optic copper and other cable connections. Wireless has been known to be spotty. It can be cut off. It can be, all kinds of things can happen with wireless. Rolling blackouts would also affect WTFs, and they negate any possible benefit for emergency services. A lot of people, actually, almost everyone does not have a 5G phone, a 5G router, and therefore trying to insinuate that they can call the emergency services using their non-5G phone, I think is kind of absurd. Field tests absolutely need to be performed. And if the city does not do that, they're going to be held liable for any time that the RF emissions are exceeded. Jody mentioned earlier the ADA requirements, as did another speaker. As you know, pulse-modulated microwave radiation transmissions adversely affect electronic medical devices, pacemakers, hearing aids, sleep monitors, and all kinds of things, and they can cause unnecessary impairments, illnesses, and death. And there are environmental effects which are well-established. And the other big factor that you need to understand are the significant impacts to real estate values. Thank you.
You, Jamie.
Here we, looks like we have one more. Christopher Harrington. Nope, we have a couple more.
All right.
Christopher.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, Christopher.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Okay, thank you. My name is Chris Harrington, and I'm outside counsel for Verizon Wireless. That's calling in from Denver, Colorado currently right now. I, I understand that life and work are not business as usual currently. We're all experiencing challenges and hardships in day-to-day life, trying to piece together some degree of normalcy. But what has allowed us to get anything done is the ability to adapt to regular circumstances. Unquestionably, technology has provided us, provided us with an incredible degree of adaptability, which is more apparent under our current circumstances than ever. Prior advances in wireless speed and reliability have given us the flexibility to have meetings like this one tonight in an effort to continue to move forward. Adaptable platforms in telework, telehealth, and remote education are seeing incredible surge in use that would like it by 5G technology. Our ability to keep certain sectors of the economy somewhat functional and our ability to connect with friends and family during this time are currently reliant on technological advances like 5G that people have historically opposed for some of the same reasons raised in the comments and letters of those opposing approval of this resolution tonight. Verizon Wireless has been trying to negotiate with Walnut Creek for over two years to get a workable agreement, and other carriers have been doing the same. The MLA as proposed tonight is fair and provides the city with substantial protections. Verizon Wireless's discussion with Walnut Creek have not been rushed. This has been a long road, and I think all parties are ready to move beyond the paper and toward responsibly rolling out technology that will benefit the citizens of Walnut Creek into the future, just as prior advancements are benefiting us today. And as such, I respectfully request the city approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute MLAs for small cell pole attachments. Thank you for your time tonight, everyone.
Thank you. Is there another person?
Yes, we're bringing in attendee Paul G.
Dan, start my time. Can you hear me?
Paul, yes, we can hear you.
Great. So, what I want to say is that I think it's wrong that you're allowing the propaganda from the wireless companies into our public comment. And I think that you have already heard strong evidence because you've been warned by an attorney yesterday in a ma, in a letter that went to your mayor. So, here's more evidence for your public record to encourage you to continue this item because you have discarded, you have not included the public in your negotiations. You have excluded the public. Every single thing in your report talks about a closed session and negotiations with wireless companies. You've not allowed the public to participate. So, I attest and affirm the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I am placing the city of Walnut Creek on notice. Yesterday, the mayor received a letter from attorney Mark Pollak representing Walnut Creek residents. Quote, "This letter serves to place you on notice that the indemnity and insurance provisions in this master licensing agreement are inadequate because they do not specifically indemnify the city nor insure it against personal injury caused by RF EMR exposures. The general liability insurance coverage currently required under the agreement does not require proof of additional insurance to cover RF EMR-induced injury. In fact, it's no insurance at all for that. The standard general liability insurance policy has a pollution exclusion. This exclusion lists RF EMR exposures as expressly excludes this from coverage." You are woefully misinformed by your city attorney. You have many things that you can do to have a much stronger master licensing agreement, but you're uninformed. You need to take a pause and talk to the experts who got the veto of California SB 649 from Governor Brown to make sure that you retain your local control. Why would you throw it away in a reckless master licensing agreement, being so woefully uninformed? You have much stronger things you can do. Please talk to some experts other than the wireless industry. Please talk to the public who are giving you evidence which are going to nail you to the wall for your liability if you move forward tonight.
Okay, we're bringing in attendee by the name of Cece.
Okay.
Cece, can you please state your name and city of residence for the record?
Sure, this is Rod Stevenson. I wanted to just also make a push for option number one, to push this. just also make a push for option number one, to push this agenda to at least off to the next meeting, if not further out, for a few different reasons. One would be the COVID-19. I think this has caught everybody by surprise. And I think that there are a lot of people, I've communicated with quite a few, that they want to be involved in this. They take pride in their community here, and they, they respect the council and the board, and they really would like to be a part of this. And a lot of people, I don't think, knew how to join this meeting. They didn't know necessarily what would be discussed. And I think just for the exceptional circumstances of this outbreak that's gone on, and a lot of people, I don't think even thought that this meeting was going forward with this agenda. So for that reason, and also because this, it's a very, very hot topic right now, the 5G, the wireless. People are, they are wanting to be more involved in this. They want to know what's going on. It's such a big decision to be signing this stuff right now. From the comments I heard earlier before the topic was brought up, it sounds like there's a lot of a lot of good evidence to hold off for now. So I would strongly urge that we hold off on this for now until we can get more input and more data and have a more, feel like we know what we're doing on both sides of this. The COVID-19, it's just thrown us all, and I think I respectfully ask that we could put this off with option one, and we can come right back to it at this juncture if we need to, but it's too important to people. There are so many issues involved in this, and it, we just have to do this right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mayor, that is it for the live public comments. We have one written comment that I will go ahead and read into the record.
Thank you very much.
The message is received from Karina Kaufman of Walnut Creek. Regarding the master license agreement for small cell pole attachments, I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. The upcoming hearing to discuss the master license agreements for small cell pole attachments has presented legal problems that need to be resolved before any vote takes place. I have listed these problems below. I appreciate your immediate attention to this matter. Agenda report. The agenda report posted on the city website is missing key information and must be comprehensively filled in prior to any decision-making. Lacking truth, there is no ability to negotiate a lawful agreement with telecom providers. Officials and residents alike are not able to make informed decisions due to the false falsehoods and the omission of key facts within the report, which needs to be corrected prior to any decision-making. These include: The city agenda posted misleading statements, some of which can have negative physical and financial impacts on residents. The federal and state regulations prohibit the city from making reasonable decisions on the placement, construction, and modification of cellular towers and equipment. However, officials can make decisions on the operations of the towers and equipment. This is governed by cooperative federalism as stated by the conference report for the 1996 Telecommunication Act. This means officials are authorized to put restrictions and requirements on how the tower and equipment is operated. The operations of the tower and equipment are not mentioned in the provided information regarding the master license agreement. In addition, officials of the city of Walnut Creek are authorized to police the noise in our municipality. Noise includes vibration in the ordinance, which is what can be and cannot be heard, including radio frequency. I will stop right there.
Thank you.
And we did receive one more live public comment.
All right, bring them on.
Okay, if you could please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Am I live?
You are on.
Okay, I guess I'll go to comment number two then.
Oh.
So.
We've already heard from Paul G.
You have heard from me, but if you're willing to do it, I'd-
Thank you for your efforts, but no.
Okay, that is everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to council and is, does anybody have any further questions of staff or the city attorney? Please make your little, um, mayor pro tem, will?
Yes, thank you. This is directed to the city attorney, and I just wanted to get clarification on any legalities that any of the public speakers had mentioned. The legalities that rest within Walnut Creek, is there any concern that what we're doing is not strictly had been mandated and is legal?
No, there, the, the document that is before, the MLA that is before the council this evening does comply with state law. We do have indemnity and insurance provisions in the agreement that would require the carriers to indemnify the city for damages arise out of their operations. And so we believe the, we believe the agreements are adequate and as drafted.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Silva?
Thank you very much. I think my first question is actually go to the attorney. The, there was a phrase knowingly cause a delinquent act. Can you explain that phrase, if it's a phrase in law? That we cannot knowingly cause a delinquent act, and it was in reference to Americans with Disability Act.
I think the, the comments of, sorry, the comments about the ADA were really in the context of requesting an accommodation. And, but the accommodation isn't from the council's action of approving the MLA, because all that does is allow equipment to be installed on a facility. The accommodation that's being requested relates to the, to the transmission that may come from the facilities, and that is really a request that needs to be made through the operators of the facilities. That is their operation. It's not the city's operation. So I do not believe the city has an ADA obligation to address what would emit from the facilities that would be installed as those facilities themselves would have to be compliant with federal law as it relates to emissions from those facilities.
So federal law does specify what the emissions levels can, must, cannot exceed?
It, it sets the parameters for the operations of the facilities, and so yes, it does, it does set the parameters. And the, the, the carrier companies, the, the operators here are contractually obligated under our agreement to comply with that, and they're contractually obligated to show proof of compliance with that as they bring forward their licenses.
And as we, I asked before, that proof is a pole by pole, equipment by equipment, and also has to encompass or consider all of the cumulative EMF and RF issues that surround that pole?
That is my understanding correct.
What about noise and vibration from noise? Is that also, I was trying to remember my days on the planning commission, whether we were ever-
Yeah, the city, the city can, the city can regulate noise issues and vibration, but it has to be consistent with the city's code requirements, and the MLA also requires that the, that the facilities be operated consistent with applicable laws. I would maybe bring Mr. Waymire in to see if there's ever been any indication that there have been noise issues associated with an actual volume noise issues. I'm not aware of those. It's been more with the, with the power sources that are associated with larger cell facilities that have sometimes caused some noise concerns.
Steve, if you could hit your button.
Got it. There we go. So the only time I've ever known to be a noise issues with larger facilities, but that's something that we would have some control over when we implement these from our planning department, too.
Okay. Thank you. My last question that really dovetails back to what we heard is the relation to, and Steve Mattis, you may have to answer this, and all of the conversations I've heard, both at Sacramento and vis a vis in DC related to these wireless operators and what they're trying to do, operations was never a word saying we had the authority or control over. And I've heard some national experts in this arena, all of whom were arguing for our rights for local control at the local level, but they're, they were never saying that we had that right. What, where is the confusion coming from?
Well, it, it may be in the scope of authority that the courts have recognized the, the Ninth Circuit case that was identified, the T-Mobile West case, does recognize some city authorities, city authority over the use or occupation of the public right of way resulting from wireless facilities, including aesthetics, noise, and some forms of health and safety concerns, but in the context of like where you put the pole in the public right of way.
So that somebody wouldn't fall into it?
So somebody doesn't walk into it. And it's also, you know, this ordinance, this MLA has, as the council's aware, it has requirements for the placement of the equipment on the pole so that people, again, can't walk into it. And so it's, it's that kind of issue, but in terms of the emissions that may come off of the pole, the requirement in this MLA is very clear, and it's requirement of federal law. It has to comply with the federal standards. And those standards are, have been identified and implemented, and, and they're enforceable under this MLA. So if they have a facility that doesn't comply with that, then they have to bring it into compliance.
Thank you.
They have to establish compliance when they get their initial approval to.
So mayor, I don't want to be the only one asking questions. Those were the ones that I came up, that I wanted to ask post the public comment. I do have a few others that are technical in nature related to the MLA, but I wouldn't want to, my, my colleagues the opportunity.
I understand your, your colleagues have not asked for any, and as a result of your questions and the responses from the city attorney and the city staff, my questions have been answered. So if you have a few more loose ends, please feel free to take this time to follow up.
So they, this may be the attorneys or Mr. Waymire. Speaking of protecting the public from walking into this equipment, I did suggest that we negotiate with the carriers that the, that eight feet, not seven feet, be the prescribed minimum height above the sidewalk. And so that was why that was there. And then I have a number of questions. Well, I actually, I recommended a number of things when reviewing the master license agreement vis a vis the fees and how to simplify the payment and billing process because each of these will be billed separately, well, paid separately theoretically. And those were included in some errata sheets. And I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to go through those with council as opposed, because they came later in the afternoon, and I was reading the public comment and not the errata sheets.
I'm happy to do that. The council has in its packet an errata sheet that was distributed by the city clerk's office, and that is posted on the city's website right now. And it does provide some modifications to the language in the agreement. I would characterize most of them, well, all of them as really being effectively non substantive to the deal that, or to the MLA agreement and the arrangement that's in there. They also clear up a few kind of inconsistent word usage where, where one, one defined term was in there, but it wasn't used consistently throughout all of the agreements. But again, that all relates to like the commencement of rent, the commencement of the license fee, I would say, the collection of the license fee. So that is what is identified in change one in the addendum, and that's specifically to the Xnet agreement. There is also a change in the permitted uses section for the Xnet agreement, which just makes clear the understanding that exists between the parties already that it is one carrier per pole. And so, so to the extent that a company might represent more than one carrier, doesn't mean that they can put two carriers' equipment on a pole. There's only one allowed. That's the same standard that Verizon and AT&amp;T are held to here as well. The next set of changes in the errata really relate to the payment methodology. It doesn't actually change what the council has seen in the packet to date. And the license fee starts at 270 and is escalated by the same 3% that is present in the agreement. But it just further states that so that to the extent that there's somebody interpreting in this agreement six years from now that's different than the people that are involved right now, it'll be very clear to them exactly what each license fee amount is for each of the 10 years that are anticipated in this master license agreement. So again, I don't consider that a substantive change. I just consider that clarifying change. As councilmember Silva noted, we have proposed to change the height, so the minimum height at which equipment can be installed to go from seven to eight feet. And so we would be having further discussions with the carriers about that as we move forward with this. The council will recall that the resolution that is before the council this evening does allow for modifications upon the approval of the city attorney and the approval of the city manager, where they don't increase the burdens on the city. And this is a kind of a minor change that we would characterize within that. And then the other changes that are identified in the errata sheets are really primarily of the nature of just clerical corrections. We had three different agreements at various times. There are three different agreements before you this evening. And in further review, we realized that some language that had been updated didn't get carried from one agreement to the other, and so we've, we've corrected that for the record. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council has. But again, I don't characterize these changes as substantive in any way in terms of the understanding that has been reached by the, by the city staff and, and the carriers. But we wanted to make sure the record was clear with these changes. And these, again, are posted on the city's website, so.
I have one question. To the extent, Steve, that the change that's proposed in the Xnet version of the master license agreement, to the extent that that change would be applicable to either the Verizon or the AT&amp;T agreement, we would be approving that to be proposed to them as well?
That's correct. Some of the changes in the errata sheet apply to all of the carriers, but a couple of them are just specific to Xnet because of the, because they were changes that were necessary to that agreement. And the same is true, I believe, for Verizon and AT&amp;T. There's some very specific ones that are necessary. But none of them bring the agreements out of consistency with, with the other parties. They're, they are all generally, they are all the same terms in terms of the license fee, in terms of the increase of the license fee if the FCC order is overturned, and in terms of the, the full cost recovery that is identified through a deposit and then a payment account as the city had, had, had identified as a, as a city priority in these, in these discussions.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Conclusions, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
I believe that was councilmember Waddell. Thank you.
Second. With the changes as amended.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Waddell?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor pro tem, will?
I don't have an issue with, with this in general, but I do feel that at this time, we've already been debating this for several months, and with us having this first meeting following the COVID crisis, I don't have a problem in waiting. And obviously, there's enough consternation on behalf of the public of- there's enough consternation on behalf of the public of having this discussion at a later date. And so I will vote no with that in mind.
Thank you.
Mayor Haskew?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
The motion is carried, and we are finally finished with the consent. Next is public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. I again remind you that you have two minutes to speak, because as you can see, this is a slower process than just the old one. After each speaker, the council may ask questions or not. And if you're calling on Zoom by telephone only, please know to hit star nine. Thank you very much. City Clerk, is there anybody waiting to talk to us?
Yes, we have a few people. We'll bring in Bob Williams.
Thank you.
Bob, you're on.
Great. I'm going to talk about mistakes that were made tonight by the city council. So I attest to affirm the following statements are true, accurate within my personal knowledge. And I'm telling you that there's a Supreme Court decision, jury a Garnier on June 20, 2011, Justice Kennedy wrote about the the US Constitution, quote, among other rights essential to freedom, the First Amendment protects, quote, the right of the people to petition the government for a redress of grievances, end quote. The right to petition allows citizens to express their ideas, hopes, and solutions to their government and their elected representatives. The right to speak fosters the public exchange of ideas that is integral to deliberative democracy, something we are not seeing from this city council at all. How can you actually justify a closed-door negotiation session only among city staff and wires companies when you block the public from the entire process and then during a COVID-19 health crisis, bring it forward and think this is sufficient? You were properly warned yesterday by an attorney about this matter. You made a very large error this evening by the vote that you just took. You have to respect the rights of the people and their ability to engage in redressing their grievances to their government, something you're blocking by saying, oh, two minutes by Zoom, that's all you get. And we're going to give all the time we want to the wires companies. Come on in. Let's meet. Let's talk. Let's have dinner. Let's cut some deals. All public two minutes by Zoom during lockdown. This is just egregious, folks. And your city attorney is very misinformed about his telecom law, very misinformed. I would have him look very hard at pages eight through nine, which I just emailed to you from the Supreme Court, California Supreme Court decision from 2019. It is not just about bumping into a poll, sir. It is about noise.
Well, that certainly proves that the people have the right to speak. Is there?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, Steve, I just want to confirm, when we negotiate this agreement or agreements with employee groups or any really any other contractual agreement, I mean, we had a contractual agreement tonight with with a possible that was a possible agreement with a restaurant. All those are done behind closed seat and closed doors for obvious reasons and then brought out for approval and public communication? Is that correct?
It's it's correct as long as it falls within the permissible category. So the employee agreements are labor negotiations, and the use of the public right of way is real property negotiations. And I would just state for the record, this has not been been done completely behind closed doors. All of the agendas have met the requirements that are set under the Brown Act. And as the council is aware from the correspondence you've received, which was pretty voluminous for this evening on this issue, the public is being provided an opportunity to comment on these. The agreements have been out for consideration for the required period of time under the Brown Act. And and there's been a fair amount of public dialogue, including staff being called and responding to calls today from some of the speakers tonight that have raised at least one of the speakers tonight, who's raised comments and questions. And so there has been, there has been the required amount and probably more than that of of public engagement on this issue today.
And this has also, this has also been covered in closed session many times and provided the public the ability to come down and comment every time that we discuss this in closed doors.
It has always been on an agenda, and the public has been made aware of it. And the the basis for being in closed session has been because we are actually allowing people to use the public right of way. And so we have the right under California law to talk about the terms and conditions for the utilization of public property. And that's what we did. But the actual agreements themselves are being considered in open session only with with a full public view and transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We are bringing in Ton Hall.
Thank you.
Is safe and your families are healthy.
On, you're on.
Okay. Hello, council members. I hope everyone is safe and your families are healthy during these times of uncertainty. They're very scary, and our futures are challenged by this crisis. You guys can actually see me. I'm sure you are all busy fighting for figuring out our new normal as we deal with this pandemic. This time, give this opportunity to reflect back on our lives. We have more time with our families. My daughter Alexis is home doing online schooling for her senior year in college, driving at her internship, and me and my husband are working from home. Even though we have a full house, our house is empty. Miles isn't home to eat his favorite mashed potatoes or grilled chicken with his dad or watch movies with his sister. Miles is missed. His funny bubbly personality is missed, and we are in pain. In this time of crisis, it is a glaring reminder that Miles isn't here with us. Our house is empty and hollow, and the energy of his booming rapids are desperately missed. We miss the bonding with Miles and smelling his famous pancakes that he enjoyed cooking. Home is now different at the halls. These are obvious reminders with the time that we have at home. Miles was taken from us 10 months, five days ago, while he was having a mental health crisis. The city council, chief of police, and city manager have been meeting with FOSAF, friends of Scott and Ton Hall and Alexis. While we appreciate the ongoing dialogue with city leaders, there haven't been any changes to current policies. Our family and the community's expectation from the city is that safeguards are immediately put into place and policies are changed. These expectations include that officers will not will not be allowed right back on the street after they take an innocent life, and that there will be an independent investigation after a lead of force is used to make sure protocol was used. As to this case with Miles, they were back on the street within 10 days, and there have no been commitment to an independent investigation. Those these requests have been made. They have not been met. Walnut Creek, please take the lead and make innovative with your change. Miles reserve better, and we will continue to advocate for him to make sure this community understands he wasn't a criminal.
Thank you.
We're bringing in Jody Nelson. Are you there?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The city, the city of Walnut Creek about this for two years, and yet this is the first time the public has been able to be a part of the discussion, which was barely a discussion. That right there is a problem. It's it's even ridiculous that we're sitting here talking about this dirt. And I know that the COVID crisis came upon us, but what are we doing here? You know, we there are cities that have sat down with their public, had both the public and telecom invited them to a mass meeting, sat down and talked about it, where no decisions were made, just discussions, and nothing has happened. You guys knew about this for two years. Shame on you for holding on to it. I don't care the closed meetings, the this meeting, the that meeting. You guys have known about this for two friggin' years. Where the hell were we? We were not informed two years ago. When you guys first knew about the six in six months into it, you guys should have called the public. You should have made a mass level of educating the public that this was happening. And then then you could have covered your butts, but you didn't. You barely gave us three weeks. That's it. We've had three weeks to go over, and we didn't even know if this was going to happen, because the last meeting didn't. That's all I have to say. I think there you guys have a liability issue, big. And I can tell you, I'm not going away.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Bringing in Vivian McHenry.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, super. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Boy, this has been quite the experience tonight. So this is Vivian McHenry with the Friends of Scott, Alexis, and Ton Hall, as you know, also known as FOSAF, FOSAF, and Justice for Miles Hall, at justiceformileshall.org for anyone still listening at this late hour. We want to first, you know, extend our sincere hope that each of you and your families are healthy, safe, and well. I just I have to just say that we appreciate the city's dedication and to really organize and quickly adapt in a crisis, to keep the city business and community concerns among your top priorities this evening and extending now into what 9:20 PM is, I mean, you know, if this doesn't show us your dedication, I don't, I don't know what does. So I'm just going to say thank you. And I know that's probably a different tone than I've come forward with in the past. But these are unusual times, trying times for everyone, and we recognize that that's the case for you, too. We also recognize the strain that this pandemic creates on your time and resources. And we thank you for your continued commitment to work with FOSAF, especially on mutually beneficial initiatives, which include but are certainly not limited to a non-police response to mental health calls. As Ton Hall spoke earlier about Miles, who was killed by police on June 2 in a mental health crisis, we want to continue to work with you despite the overarching, you know, the pandemic and crisis that we're in right now. We want to continue to work with you towards a non-police response to mental health calls, to adopt a restrictive use of force policy, comprehensive training for the city and law enforcement in particular, especially anti-bias training, diversity training, escalation training, to build and to build community trust. We feel, FOSAF feels that our goals and initiatives are mutually beneficial, especially in a time of crisis. And we want to continue to work together. And thank you for your time to do so.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another speaker?
We have one more, it looks like.
Attendees. CC, we've had some difficulties prior, so I'm not sure this is going to work. But we'll try.
Okay.
CC, you're on. Could you state your name for the record?
It's Ron Stevenson. And I wanted to just echo what Mr. Wilk said earlier about these being unprecedented times. I can't remember anything like this in my lifetime. And with that in mind, I really urge everyone to take a look at their conscience. There seems to be a real outcry of some people that care. I know a lot of us have kids in the schools in Walnut Creek, and thankfully, we have wonderful technology, wonderful wireless capabilities already. This is not something that's in dire need. I understand some people might have pressure to sign contracts. But this is something that's so important, and we can feel it. Some of those of us who are listening can feel it. I cannot understand what the harm would be in putting this off until another meeting. I heard a question from Mrs. Silva earlier about noise. And it does seem important to me. I looked it up right when I heard it on the internet. The first thing that popped up on the search was Merriam-Webster. The first definition is loud, confused, senseless shouting. But the second one says electromagnetic radiation, such as radio waves, that is composed of several frequencies that involves random changes in frequency. Noise, apparently, and then the next one says unwanted signal or disturbance, such as static or variation in voltage and electronic. The point is, this is electromagnetic radiation coming from and radio frequency coming from these cell towers that we're talking about, the antennas. I really urge you to please, please listen to the public. We've we have a lot of pride in the city, a lot of hours, a lot of years, and a lot of generations. We ask you to please put this off for at least one more meeting, so we can please involve the public. This is something we can't go back in time, and we can't do this again at this moment right now. So please, I urge you to listen, listen to these voices, and put this off so we can hear from those who are concerned. I do not understand what is the important rush in doing this tonight. I've been watching this around us, the communities and other cities, and many of them have been putting this off, this something of this magnitude and this importance, even without COVID-19.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the queue?
I have one written comment that I can read into the record.
Okay, thank you. Would you get closer to your mic, please?
Yes. This is from Ginny Velasquez.
Dear city council members, I would like to say that being able to provide public comment for the 5G issue is difficult. I did not write down the email when you announced it only once at the beginning of the meeting. The Granicus application on a PC is delayed from the Zoom application on a phone, and so it's difficult to follow and communicate. I only found your email by searching for several minutes on your website. Although you've you've been discussing it for several months, it will look very bad historically to pass a contentious issue during this COVID crisis in this unusual city council meeting format. Sensitivity and concern for public health should be first and foremost in everyone's mind right now, not a small revenue stream for city tower polls, which will likely be overruled by federal law. Also, your website says each speaker has three minutes. See below. I think it's unfortunate the council has made this vote tonight versus waiting. Virginia, 25-year native of Walnut Creek.
Thank you, Virginia, for your comments and your persistence. There are no other comments?